Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing. The clerk, please call the roll. Here.
Here.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplow. All present, your honor.
Thank you. During the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to address the Assembly? No one signed up on the sign-in sheet. Yes, Austin Wheelock. Please come up, state your name, and give us your address. Sure.
My name is Austin Wheelock. I'm board president of Heritage Foundation of Oswego County. Also work at Operation Oswego County as an economic developer. Just wanted to read a short letter, if I may, about the upcoming proposals for the Cahill Building that is going to be in a week's time.
That would be for a public session. I don't believe we have one scheduled.
Okay.
Yes, this is to address the budget.
All right.
This evening. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments or concerns regarding the budget? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Counselor Kaplowitz, Counselor Todd. Please call it all.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright. Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker. Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Close the public hearing, and let's begin the regular meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk, please call the roll.
His honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Under the mayor's remarks, I would like to first welcome everyone for attending the special meeting. I know it's a nice, warm summer evening, and you've probably got better things to do, but thank you for coming. I'd also like to personally thank each and every council member for their contributions and ideas during these challenging and rather lengthy budget meetings. I also want to thank all of our department heads for their sincere, professional, and timely budget submissions. This has been a time for some tough decisions. We've been doing them now for a few years, so we're getting pretty good at it. It's been said that turbulent seas make for the best sailors, but how appropriate that the poor city should have such fearless and dedicated sailors as we have in the council today. I've been very pleased to see the level of community engagement in this budget process and the council's willingness to take and incorporate citizens' input. I appreciate my colleagues on the council listening to community input over three long community budget events after my proposed budget was issued. I want to thank you to every community member who participated, whether in person, by email, letter, or phone call, and even those who stopped us in the streets to give us some friendly advice. This budget process is something that often separates administrations. Not so with this one. This brings us together to define who we are as a community and what we want to be in the future. Although we face continued challenges, we will do what we need to do. We will meet and overcome all the obstacles that stand in the way of Oswego's economic growth and the enhanced quality of life for all of its residents. So again, I want to thank everyone for all the hard work and the effort and all the input. Do any of the councillors have any comments they'd like to share? Counselor Barlow.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to comment on the budget and really just thank my colleagues on the council for all their hard work, particularly on the Saturday marathon budget session. Just for -- so the public's aware, we started this budget with a -- the mayor proposed a 3.9% increase. That required us to find $213,000 to get to a 2% increase. It required us to find $430,000 to get to a 0% increase. In that budget that called for a 3.9%, we were missing a community development office and a substantial amount of money for code enforcement. During the Saturday budget workshop, we managed to restore funding for a community development office and restore funding, at least the majority of the funding needed for a code enforcement office. At the same time, we substantially lowered the proposed increase. So I just want to thank my colleagues for their hard work. I want to especially thank Counselor Van Buren, who I worked very closely with this on, and I appreciate everything he helped with. And City Chamberlain Deb Code, thank you, Deb.
Any other comments? Counselor Van Buren.
Thank you. Just wanted to echo Counselor Barlow's sentiments. I really appreciate him coming along with us, the two of us coming to meet with each department head and going over this beforehand. I also want to thank all of you gentlemen for taking the time out of your day to go through this budget as thoroughly as you did. I know in past councils, that's not the case. You guys are above and beyond, going through line by line. I really appreciate the Saturday that you guys dedicated to this. It was no small feat to go through that budget, restore community development and code, and then go through it again to recoup the budget back down. I appreciate all the efforts that you guys made. Thank you for being a part of that meeting, mayor. Appreciate your time and your dedication.
Thank you, sir. Counselor.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the two councillors who really put a lot in, Mr. Barlow and Mr. Van Buren. They did a lot of hours, countless hours on it, and everybody else. We all did, but I seen them two really going great at it, and I want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Counselor Enright.
Yeah, I just want to thank Counselor Van Buren. I don't know if anybody had a chance to notice Eric's worksheet during the quiet meeting, but I believe he worked that stuff and stiffed us because he must have had $200 on those sheets, and he did a really good job keeping the bins organized and moved it to Eric. So thank you for all the help.
Any other comments? Seeing none, please call Resolution 363.
Resolution 363 would approve the proposed 2016 city operating budget.
Counselor Van Buren. Second Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
I guess, point of order, and before we vote on a budget, I think we need to vote on amendments.
Okay. 363, aye?
We need a motion and a second.
Can we have a moment?
Yeah, so just so everyone knows, she has to call the resolution for the budget to go. Normally, one of us would raise our hand, and then we would say that we'd like to call the amendment, so.
Or please call the amendment starting with 363. Should have been before that. Can I have a motion to amend Resolution Number 363?
Who's motion? Who's making the motion?
I need a motion. Counselor Van Buren.
Counselor Barlow. Call the roll.
This is a motion to amend. Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
Resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 363.
Resolution -- that was 363A. Resolution 364 is a motion to amend Resolution Number 363 regarding engineering fees for services.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 365.
Resolution 365 is a motion to amend Resolution Number 363 regarding planning fees for services.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Counselor Kaplowitz.
Your honor, just because I know the members of the audience have asked, the clerk could use this key to briefly state, this is a $20,000 increase reassigned from the engineer for site plan review. And I think that'll help the folks in the audience that don't have the name number.
Motion.
So Resolution 365 is reassigning from the engineer for site plan review an increase in $20,000.
Okay. Counselor Enright. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0. Resolution 366 is a motion to amend Resolution Number 363 regarding police equipment, and this would decrease police equipment $4,500 for vehicle equipment.
Counselor Barlow. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 367.
Resolution 367 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding police overtime, and this would decrease police overtime by $41,000.
Counselor Walker. Second Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 368.
Resolution 368 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding municipal buildings contracted services, and this would decrease contracted services by $20,000 for miscellaneous services.
Counselor Kaplowitz and Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 369.
Resolution 369 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding maintenance of street equipment, and this would decrease the equipment expense by $60,000 for the asphalt recycler.
Counselor Barlow. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 370.
Resolution 370 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding garage equipment, and this would decrease the equipment account by $20,000 for compact cars.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 371.
Resolution 371 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding parks and equipment, and this would decrease the equipment account by $31,000, which is a vehicle, another truck.
Motion. Counselor Walker and Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yep.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 372.
Resolution 372 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding marina contracted services, and this would decrease by $5,000 equipment rental dock repair.
Counselor Kaplowitz. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Van -- all right, Enright.
Yeah, I'm -- as of last week, we had a bad storm come through here on Tuesday, and it severely damaged the wave attenuator dock and the international marina, breaking it in half. And by doing so, we also lost another large section on the east side, which has been tied up since last year there. And in lieu of this new information, I would ask the guys to consider not decreasing the amount here by the $5,000 and give it to the DPW. They're going to need this money in order to protect that $1.2 million in docks that we have there. So Mike Smith, I see the commissioner is here, he can speak on that if you'd like to know the severity of the damage that happened last week, but I'm strongly urging us not to decrease this amount of money.
Commissioner, would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the councillor is correct. We've had additional damage to the A-Doc attenuator. We are expecting a professional evaluation of it here sometime in the next couple of weeks to get us tells exactly what damage has been done and what it's going to cost us to repair it. The extra $5,000 would be very helpful going forward in 2016 to make those repairs.
Any other comments from the elected councillors?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
No.
Counselor Enright.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
Yes. The resolution passes 5-2.
Please call Resolution 373.
Resolution 373 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding fire and equipment. This would decrease their account by $33,000 for a vehicle.
Counselor Barlow. Counselor Walker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 374.
Resolution 374 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding fire ambulance supplies, and this would decrease that account by $3,500 for ambulance supplies.
Motion. Counselor Van Buren. Second Counselor Walker. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 375.
Resolution 375 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding fire ambulance equipment, and this would decrease it by $5,000 for ambulance equipment.
Counselor Kaplowitz. Second Counselor Todd. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 375.
Resolution 376 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding fire repairs to equipment, and this would decrease their equipment repair by $5,000.
Motion. Counselor Walker. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 377.
Resolution 377 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding fire miscellaneous, and this would decrease their miscellaneous account by $5,000.
Counselor Barlow. And second Counselor Todd. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 378.
Resolution 378 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding fire overtime, and this would decrease by $101,000 overtime for -- $100,000 for regular overtime and $1,000 for Harborfest overtime. It would decrease by $26,200 retirement on overtime and another $8,080 for social security on overtime.
Counselor Barlow. Counselor Walker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 379.
Resolution 379 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding personnel contingent, and this would decrease firefighter and benefits by 70,000 -- increase, increase by 70,000, excuse me.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Counselor Enright.
I just have a question. Is this 70,000 we set aside for the code enforcement overtime? You know, is that the codes money?
No, this is decreasing in -- I should say it's a lateral transfer from overtime to personnel contingent, or vice versa, rather. We're taking out one of the firefighter positions in anticipation of them hiring a floater to fill gaps in the overtime.
This is the floater.
This is the floating position that we're doing. They'll be coming on to do that, and because of that, the overtime was dramatically increased.
Got it. Thank you, councillor.
Any other questions?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-1.
Please call Resolution 380.
Resolution 380 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding legislative miscellaneous, and this would decrease the miscellaneous expense by $1,000.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 381.
Resolution 381 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding treasure miscellaneous, and this would decrease the miscellaneous expense by $1,000.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Todd. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 382.
Resolution 382 is a motion to amend Resolution 363 regarding animal control equipment, and this would decrease their equipment account by $10,000.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker. Any discussion? Counselor Todd, Counselor Walker, any discussion?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-three.
Resolution three eighty-three is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding shade trees in parks overtime. This would decrease overtime, Harbor Fest overtime by one thousand dollars. It would decrease retirement on overtime by two hundred and five dollars, and it would decrease social security on overtime by eighty dollars.
Counselor Walker and Counselor Enright, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
Resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-four.
Resolution three eighty-four is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding street cleaning overtime, and this would decrease or reassign Harbor Fest overtime to personnel contingent in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars. It would decrease retirement on overtime by forty-nine hundred forty-five dollars, and it would decrease social security on overtime by twenty-three twenty. And then it would reassign Harbor Fest overtime, increasing it in the amount of thirty-six two sixty-five.
Todd. Any discussion?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-five.
Resolution three eighty-five is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding police overtime, and this would decrease by twenty-six thousand by reassigning Harbor Fest overtime to personnel contingent. It would decrease by sixty-seven sixty retirement on overtime. It would decrease by twenty-one sixty social security on overtime, and then it would increase by reassigning Harbor Fest overtime in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine twenty.
Counselor Todd, Counselor Kaplowitz, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-six.
Resolution three eighty-six is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding fire overtime. This would reassign Harbor Fest overtime to personnel contingent in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, decrease it in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. It would decrease retirement on overtime in the amount of thirty-one twenty. It would decrease social security on overtime by nine hundred and sixty dollars, and then it would increase by sixteen thousand eighty dollars by reassigning Harbor Fest overtime.
Counselor Kaplowitz. Counselor Van Buren, any discussion?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-seven.
Resolution three eighty-seven is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding municipal buildings utilities. This would decrease the recalculation of expense by forty thousand dollars.
Counselor Walker. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-eight.
Resolution three eighty-eight is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding community development administrative support, and this would increase by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars administrative support in the community development office.
Counselor Kaplowitz, Counselor Todd, any discussion? I'm sorry, Counselor Walker.
This two hundred and fifty thousand dollars were put in for community development, it wasn't even in the budget for us, so we had to come up with something for community development, and we ended up finding a way, thanks to Mr. Van Buren and Barlow, to work their tails off through this, so we're going with it.
Thank you Counselor, any other comments? Counselor Enright.
I'm just glad to see that we're putting our money into community development right now for something other than going after Section eight housing, and we need this kind of money in order to pursue the grants that's going to make the city vibrant, and so I'm glad to see that the support is out there for community development. Thank you.
Thank you sir, any other comment? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three eighty-nine.
Resolution three eighty-nine is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding public works administration personnel services. This would decrease by forty-two thousand six seventy-six by deletion of a position to be vacated in 2015. It would decrease eighty-seven forty-eight in retirement, and it would decrease by thirty-four fourteen social security.
Counselor Walker.
We discussed this position with the Commissioner, he is trading this position for another one that we will vacate, so I would appreciate if the Counselors could vote in our favor this one, we'll be later on taking a resolution up the floor.
Any other comment? Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, we're making the motion.
Oh, okay. Motion Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Walker, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
No.
Counselor Enright.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker. Counselor Barlow.
No.
The resolution is defeated, one six.
I vote no too Barb.
Did I?
Please call.
If it counts, I'll vote no too.
Please call Resolution three eighty-nine A.
Resolution three eighty-nine A. A moment please. A would remove an open position by forty-one thousand, by decreasing the amount of forty-one thousand nine sixty. It would decrease retirement eighty-six oh two and decrease social security by thirty-three fifty-six.
Counselor Van Buren, you have a second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three ninety.
Resolution three ninety is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding police equipment, and this would decrease the police budget by thirty-seven thousand six hundred by taking out a vehicle.
Counselor Van Buren, second. Counselor Walker, any discussion?
I will not be supporting this amendment, we discussed it during the budget hearing. I believe the replacement plan that the chief put together is a very good system for us to follow in replacing vehicles. We saw earlier in the year that Pioneer compact cars were left in the Department of Public Works budget from several years ago. In fact, it was the year before the replacement plan was put in place. Because of the replacement plan, we were able to take the old police cars and put them into the motor pool for the city. I think that system is good, it allows the public to know what's coming, it already has calculated down to the mile when we will be replacing cars. It's an easy system to follow, and I think we can easily see when taking one out is going to have effects on the public.
Any other comments?
I also agree with Counselor Van Buren. We were on board early when we had to make a decision about buying several police cars because we got in a situation where cars weren't bought for many years, and the police put together this plan, I felt it was a wall of thought out plan. It really is not a matter of want and need here, it's a strategic plan so that, as you can see up in the budget here, we're able to eliminate things like a small truck and another compact car. It's fifty thousand dollars in savings because of the trickle-down effect of what's happened in this department, so I'm not going to support this resolution.
Thank you sir, any other comments, Counselor Barlow?
Thanks Mayor, I'll be supporting this amendment. Typically what happens is when the police department is finished with a vehicle, it goes over to the DPW or the Citywide Motor Pool. You look around City Hall anytime, you see that there's cars here for the motor pool, so we're definitely not short on the Citywide Motor Pool. The police chief submitted a budget that required two, the purchase of two new police cars. We are just taking out one. I believe that if the cars are still in good shape, just because the schedule says buy the cars, maybe this is a good time and place to try to squeeze a little more out of it. Cars are still in decent shape, and we can save the taxpayers some money.
Thank you sir, any other comments?
I just want to make a note that if you look at what the cars are like that the guys are driving in zoning or code, some of the windows don't even work, and they're really falling apart, you wouldn't even want to get in them. So by implementing this plan, I feel that we're going to get some decent cars coming down there, safe cars, and we're also going to have, you know, rotating into the fleet, good cars so the police have dependable cars in order to do their job, so I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you Counselor, any other comments?
Thank your honor, I certainly appreciate Counselor Barlow's, you know, the need for us to save every dollar we can here and there. I do also believe that we have a very good schedule before for the police department, and I think it's paramount that they have safe vehicles to drive in. I mean, they are, there are public safety nets, and cars may appear good now, but something may happen. And I don't think a may happen can happen when you have somebody responding to potentially a very tragic situation. We have a good schedule, we have a car that may give us a little more use in the motor pool, but it's one of those cases.
Any other comments?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
No.
Counselor Enright.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
No.
The resolution is defeated, three to four.
Please call Resolution three ninety.
Resolution three ninety-one is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding general fund revenue sales tax, and this would increase by recalculating the sales tax by fifty thousand dollars.
Counselor Todd and Counselor Van Buren, any discussion?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three ninety-two.
Resolution three ninety-two is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding general fund revenue, unassigned capital accounting reserve. This would increase the account by seventy thousand dollars.
Counselor Van Buren, you have a second? Counselor Walker, any discussion?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution.
Resolution three ninety-three is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding transmission and distribution personal services. This would decrease the account by fifty-eight thousand four ninety-one, which is a new position for assistant commissioner. It would decrease eleven thousand eight seventy-three in retirement, it would decrease social security by forty-eight, forty-six eighty, and then the recalculation reflected change to personnel services would be a decrease of seventy-five thousand zero four four.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Van Buren, any discussion?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes six one.
Please call Resolution three ninety-three A.
Resolution three ninety-three A is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding DPW equipment, and that would decrease by eight thousand dollars, which is a dump trailer.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Walker, any discussion, Counselor Van Buren?
This was already removed from the budget during the budget hearing. I missed this amendment when reviewing it with the City Chamberlain, so it just needs to be added in now, but this money was already taken out of the budget.
Any other comments?
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution three ninety-three B.
Resolution three ninety-three B is a motion to amend Resolution three sixty-three regarding planning, personal services, and this would decrease an unfunded position of Director of Planning and Zoning by sixty-seven thousand two eighty-nine. It would decrease retirement by thirteen thousand seven ninety-five, and it would decrease social security by thirty-two eighty.
Your honor, I first would thank all my colleagues for all the hard work they put in, and I certainly had my share, but I wasn't able to participate in budget workshops, and had I, I would have asked that we follow through on some discussions that we've had as a council, as a mayor, regarding how we were going to handle the planning and zoning department as well as some of the responsibilities that were being managed by our community development office. And I do believe that this resolution takes us in the right direction to consolidate some positions and for more direct leadership for planning activities which are so needed by the city. There's a second half to this which doesn't just deep-fund the position, but establishes in personnel contingent, planning position, and I guess there's a second part of this resolution, but I'm opposed to this.
I'd like to ask Counselor Kaplowitz if he had a chance to discuss this with our Personnel Director at all. Pardon? Do you have a chance to discuss this with our Personnel Director at all?
No.
Or the department head that you're unfunding? No, I would like to make a correction to the reading of this, this is a funded position, this is a current position that's being held by someone. I certainly appreciate Counselor Kaplowitz's input, I would appreciate more if he had the insight to bring this to the council well before this meeting, knowing that the five percent tax gap put a very tight constraint on our time for any of us to handle these types of situations, given that I only, that the council has only one business day from right now to make any changes. I also think this proposal isn't thought out very well. It leaves an entire department worth of funds still in the budget. It also doesn't take into account what that amount of money being removed from our budget would do on top of the cuts that this council worked very hard to make, as well as the City Chamberlain's hours in putting this budget back together. I have to, I guess, question the wisdom of doing that when we have not fully sorted out what community development will be doing. We had a rather lengthy discussion on Saturday of the direction that that department wants to go in, and I appreciate our new Community Development Director's efforts and the time he puts into this position. He certainly takes it very seriously, he's very, very good at communicating to the council and the mayor what's going on, the issues that he faces, opportunities for the city, those are all things that I expect from him, and he does them very well. But I don't think that currently, him just walking into this position is a time to take away a department head and essentially a department that has more than enough work for both of them to do.
I would like to ask our Personnel Director, Rita Stickel, to comment. Any other comments from the Council, Counselor Enright?
I want to thank Ron for his work on this. I've worked together here for four years, and I know he really does look at everything and all the sections and tries to cut, make our budget within our limits, but and something like this, defunding a whole department head the last, you know, the eleventh hour basically, I just can't agree with that. I think, I don't think this is the place for it, and I really can't support it. I feel that at this particular point, and there's so many things again that need to be discussed with our Personnel Director, and so I just, I just can't support it.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes, your honor, I appreciate what the council is saying, this is not about an individual, it's about a position, and it's about how it works in the organization of the city. And I don't think any of us wouldn't say that we haven't been challenged in many respects in the world of planning and zoning and code and a whole host of other things, and the leadership that's necessary to carry that job out effectively. This is simply, and I said, there's two resolutions with this. The second resolution that adds sixty-six thousand for a planner to personnel contingent, and it really reassigned some responsibilities to a, very specific responsibilities, planning obligations, that we so sorely need in this city. And it also puts in place the type of leadership that we need in order to effectively carry on not only a community development office, but also a planning and zoning function. Whoever, whether it's yourself, your honor, or to others that aspire to be mayor, there's a job that has to be done in order to effectively put together that house. And I view that it was necessary and responsible way to do that.
I'm looking at this, and it really looks like a restructure. And again, we got an election year, and we're talking about restructuring a rather large department in City Hall, and I just can't buy into it. Leadership, I feel that we have the leadership in the planning and zoning that we need to carry on, and if the next administration, where we view, feels that they need to restructure City Hall, then let them do it. But at this particular point in time, this is not, this is not the time to restructure right before an election and eliminating a department, and again, without even having personnel involved. So it really opens us up, it requires much more discussion than really what we're prepared to be doing here tonight.
Ms. Stickel. Thank you. Counselor Van Buren.
Just go back to my original point, that while I appreciate the suggestion, I believe this is very poorly timed and very poorly thought out, not having the proper department heads or the department head themselves involved in this conversation, let alone the council who would be voting on this. And I also have to question the wisdom of setting up future administrations to make decisions based on your own and what you see being fit. I believe, you know, current mayor, possible candidates that will be coming in should be allowed to make their own decisions, that's why they're running, they have platforms, they have needs and wishes for the city. You know, if they feel that this department needs to be changed dramatically, or leadership needs to be changed dramatically, which potentially will be with a new candidate coming in, that should be on their decision and for them to articulate to the city and council why they feel that that's the case.
Any other comments?
I will just say, your honor, that this is put forward, and it really is about leadership. It is about having this council and this mayor take responsibility for how our city operates. And I don't think there's anybody in here that can't look around and think about all areas of City Hall where we can make improvements, and we can restructure, we've done that, whether it's with the fire department overtime, or with less firefighters, or with a whole host of other things. You do it as a council and as a mayor. Certainly department heads have a right to say what they want to say, but ultimately, the responsibility falls on our shoulders really. And that's why I think this discussion, anything, is a good thing. There's important issues that I still believe that have to be discussed, whether it's this council and you all, because I'm not running again next year, if you can call me a lame duck, it doesn't mean that I don't care about our city and what's going to happen in 2016 and beyond, that's what this is about. I think all of us spend a lot of time becoming intimately familiar with the way our city operates, and that we're all trying to do what's right for our city. And I guess I would suggest, maybe before a vote, if we have a Personnel Director that feels that this needs to be discussed in executive session, I'll leave it up to our council to, this council I should say, to make the decision if we want to move that, move this discussion to executive session before we go further, or vote.
Ms. Stickel, do you have any comments? Counselor Walker, Counselor McLaughlin, please call the roll.
Motion to move to executive session, Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
The motion passes 6-1.
Now go into executive session. Executive session? Counsel Van Buren? Counsel Capelitz? Show hands. Do we have any resolution? Yes. Counsel Capelitz?
Yes, Your Honor, at this time, I withdraw the amendment that I presented earlier.
Do I have a second? Counsel Van Buren? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
The vote to withdraw, Counsel Capelitz?
Yes.
Counsel Enright?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
No.
Counsel Barlow?
Yes.
Counsel Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-1.
Please call Resolution 393B.
We're withdrawing 393B, so Resolution 393C?
Withdraw.
Is withdrawn.
Do we vote on that? No vote on that. Okay. Is there any other unfinished business?
363 as amended.
Go back to the beginning.
363 as amended.
We're going to go back and approve the budget, the 2016 city operating budget as amended.
For clarification, this is on the budget as amended?
Correct.
Yes.
Counsel Enright?
Yes, as amended.
Counsel McLaughlin?
No.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel Barlow?
Yes.
Counsel Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-1 as amended.
Any other unfinished business? Counsel Van Buren? Counsel Enright? Please call the roll.
Counsel Capelitz?
Yes.
Counsel Enright?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel Barlow?
Yes.
Counsel Van Buren? The resolution passes 7-0. You better go home and go to bed.
I am.
I gave you a cough drop there.
Oh, geez. Thanks. She's got good stuff in her. It's terrible. It had to be tonight, you know?
Yeah.
I hate.
We need to do this twice, pass the budget and then pass it as amended.
Right, right, right. I didn't see it. I went right.